Okay, well, that I will call the meeting January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting to order. And I ask everyone to rise from the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the states of America. And to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, in the law, with liberty and justice for all. Call.
Trustee Campbell here, trustee Thomas here, trustee Dayton.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Yes, I'm here.
Trustee Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Prince.
Yes.
Trustee Hennig.
Yes, present. All present, one remote. With that, I would accept the motion for the to approve the motion to allow Vice President Cook to attend remotely to electronic participation as per Administrator's Policy two oh four oh two. We'll do a second on that promotion and Ray can have a second. Call.
Trustee Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Dayton.
Yes.
Trustee Prince.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Cook. Trustee Nick.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously for finding where they be where they're at. Okay, I would like to read the goal six. Anybody want to volunteer or do it? Great, thank you.
Conservation ethic, goal six, to foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us. Regardless of the basis of our interest and nature, to develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. A conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act upon that information. A conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. Goal five, to assure sufficient integration of key district functions, i.e. educational services, site planning, land and facilities management, and natural resource management, to maximize the overall effectiveness of the district.
Thank you. Conservation District's pledge.
Trustee, uh, Conservation pledge, we pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources. Thoughtfully develop cities and towns with strong and timely and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number eight, we will build strong, resilient woodlands, quarries, and wetlands while striving to foster a deep sense of place.
Thank you. I would then like a motion to adopt the agenda with twelve point four and twelve point six being pulled from the consent agenda. Uh, so that would be the motion. Somebody else has anything else I'd like to pull like you did now, otherwise that's the motion I'm looking at. Lynn has the motion. Is there a second? Chris has a second. A roll call.
Trustee Prince.
Yes.
Trustee Buck.
Yes.
Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell. Trustee Dayton.
Yes.
Trustee Hennig.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Okay, brings us on special recognition. Let's go to your people who recognize tonight.
I do, and is everybody still with us because we're having my computers pumping off and up and down here with losing internet connection. I'm going to turn it over to Wendy Koemer. I was our Director of Teams Marketing and Education to introduce our new team members.
Yes, good evening. Um, actually, I think Becky is online and we're very excited to finally fill our education staff. Um, Becky, would you like to say a few words? I see you online. There she is.
Yay. Yes. We are extraordinarily happy to fill our open positions at in the education team. Um, I'll tell you that when we opened the positions, the number of applicants we had were very, uh, we had great applicants. We really had high quality, high caliber applicants. And it was, it came down to where we were hoping people would would not be good at the at the job. But the reality was that we had overwhelmingly great options. And we are so excited that we brought in Christine Kustra and Nate Skills, who Christine Kustra has actually worked for the Conservation District before. She was a seasonal team member with Lepner. And so she knows the Conservation District and she has really committed herself to being part of our agency. So we're excited to have her. And um, she comes to us with a great environmental education skills. She comes to us from the Geneva Park District. So she's been doing environmental education for a while. Our second person that we hired and she is our new community engagement coordinator. So she will be out there talking to other community groups and making sure that um, we are engaging with as many people as we possibly can. Nate Skills is our new program coordinator one. He comes to us with um, great uh, in great background in recreation and but also environmental education. So it's a, he comes to us from the garlands at Barrington, which is um, a senior living complex. And he's one of our people who, when we asked him what group he likes to work with, he did not immediately say environmental education. He said he likes working with seniors, which is a group that we know we need to engage with more. So um, he was a great fit for us. So we're very excited to bring him on. He also has a connection to the Conservation District in that he, and somewhat, because he used to actually work at Camp Belgonquin when it was a residential education facility. So both of our new team members are are, uh, they live in the McHenry County and they have a connection to the Conservation District in their previous uh, work that they've done. And um, we're just so excited to have them both here. I don't know, Nate or Christine, do you want to say anything?
Sure. I just thank you all for having me tonight and Becky and Wendy for having me on the team. I'm looking for another great um, time at MCCD with the district. And so looking forward to working as the Community Education Coordinator. Thank you again.
You.
Yeah, thank you so much for inviting me into this. I'm excited to work with all age groups. Uh, I was talking to Becky and what I call seniors. And I heard this from a conference that I went to from Ed Tierney over in Ireland. He calls them super agers. And so I really want to hope to get everybody out there and get them out recreationally, out onto the trails and teach them about the environment as well. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. We're proud of meeting you. All right, thank you, Wendy. Um, trustees report. You want to have any report right now? Hey, how many liaison now?
Good evening. Um, so before I start, unfortunately, I have to leave right at six o'clock. My son is an eighth grader and it is eighth grade night at high school. I can't believe my youngest is going to be in high school. So um, it's been a busy couple months with uh, the board. As you guys know, uh, we voted last, last December or last month on that Duke Energy uh, solar farm. And it was unanimously approved. I'm sure you all know that, but I just wanted to reiterate that. Um, some other news. In our finance meeting yesterday, we had the first three presentations for the um, ARPO requests. And these are the requests that have gone through Broner and they're outside of the county government. And they were um, unanimously unanimously approved through finance. So this is only three people, three organizations. Um, so far, they have received a total of thirty-one completed applications. And there's also fifty-five more applications, um, but they're not yet completed. And so far, twenty-two million has been requested. The other, a couple of things, um, I don't know if you're aware of this, but Holiday Hills is putting in a uh, new sewer system. They're working with uh, Moraine Hills. No, I can't remember. I apologize. But anyway, it seems a little controversial. And I, I know the reason they're doing it is because there's a lot of flooding and they're worried about septic, all the septic systems um, flowing into the flooding waters and down Fox River. So there was a meeting Tuesday night at Nunda Township and there's another one um, on Wednesday at Holiday Hills Village Hall. If anybody's interested in attending and finding out more information, I was unable to go Tuesday, but I will be there Wednesday to find out the information. Um, we also, something on the agenda for uh, the board, there's a township dissolution statement. So we are being, we're preparing in case any township votes to um, to be dissolved. And um, so that, we have been working on every aspect that we can, so that we'll be voting on the statement. Those are just the actions that we will um, that will happen by the county if that, if it's voted on and approved. The second rental assistance allocation program is being voted on and that will, I'm sure pass, so that will be started again. Uh, we are also um, in the process, as you know, of uh, creating that police social worker program. And we are now, it's three hundred thousand dollars is coming from the county into that program. Another three hundred thousand is being put in from the mental health board. Uh, that's each this coming year. Uh, there's so far, three municipalities have signed MLUs with this uh, this program. And there's others who are about to sign also. And we're also updating some zoning language. And I know there's been some controversy on slaughterhouses and things like that. So if you want, if you're interested, you can go look online at the packet and see what the zoning is going to be, the difference. And um, we also are going to pass our legislative agenda. Many of the items are the same as last year, but a couple important ones, which you guys, it would be important for you too, is that we're asking changes to PTO. Um, it would be nice just to get rid of PTO. I don't think that's going to happen, but that's something that we are working with and we also are part of ISECO. Um, so they're going to help with that. And then we also want to change that legislation at the county level or at the state level for the township dissolution. So we can get rid of it completely, get rid of that legislation. And if we can't get rid of it, then at least apply it to all of the counties and in the state. Um, so if you guys have any questions about any of that, give me a call. I apologize for leaving, but I will be here as long as I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Kelly? Were you good? All right, thanks. I have nothing that I need to report tonight. Um, so that brings us to public comments. Uh, Stephanie, is she working this or is Wendy? Stephanie, is Stephanie, do you have?
I'm here, I don't see anyone.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. Uh, so it'll be minus twelve, four, and four, six.
That's what I was, okay. Can I ask you before I start? Yeah, I moved that we adopt the consent. As is twelve point one, approval of minutes approved. December sixteen, twenty twenty-one, Committee of the Whole, twelve point one B, December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting. Twelve point one C, November eighteen, twenty twenty-one, Executive Session, Executive Session Committee on the Whole. Twelve point two, Acceptance of the Treasurer's Report, twelve point two A. What's twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one?
It's Investment Report.
Oh.
Well, that's of the date of the twelve thirty-one is the Treasurer's Report for December thirty-first.
Okay, okay. Twelve point twelve B, Investment Report, Order Three, this will be your twenty twenty-two. Twelve point three, Second Revenue Ordinance, Ordinance Number twenty-two dash ten twelve, and Ordinance Mending Personnel Policy and Procedural Manual. Twelve point five, Resolution Number twenty-two dash oh two, Resolution Redefining Participation in McHenry County Annual Starcom Twenty-One. Radio Interoperability Grant Reimbursement Program, twelve point seven, Resolution Number twenty-two dash oh four, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the McHenry County Sheriff's Office for the Countrywide Police Social Work Program for the period of May twenty twenty-two through April twenty twenty-four, for annual costs not to exceed a thousand dollars. Twelve point eight, Resolution Number twenty-two dash oh five, a resolution authorizing payment in the amount of ten million eight hundred eighty-two dollars and eight hundred eighty-two thousand seven hundred fifty, due on February first, twenty twenty-two, to the Bank of New York Mellon, Dallas, Texas, for the General Obligation Refunding Program Series twenty fourteen. Twelve point nine, Resolution Number twenty-two dash oh six, a resolution, resolution authorizing the renewal and exec execution of one. Of a one-year printing contract between AFS and McHenry County Conservation District for the Pitting and Melon, of four issues of Landscapes Magazine. Bid number oh one two one, ten oh one. Twelve point ten, Ordinance Number twenty-two dash ten thirteen, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an extension agreement with Edge Act LLC pertaining to easements of Hebris, Hebris and signage at Coral Woods Conservation District. Area, sorry.
Is there a second? Thank you, Linda.
Yes.
Pat has a second. Uh, oh, oh, wait.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Prince.
Yes.
Trustee Dayton.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Hennig.
Yes, motion carries. So then we're going to go back to twelve four. Twelve four is the second bid of Hardin Farms and Stables on the Libertyville, the highest responsive bidder. Uh, so there were some questions. Uh, on that, you want to ask questions first, Pat, or does somebody want to present something first?
Well, should we do a, out of order, a first and a second? And since it was under consent agenda, you can always pull and then a discussion.
That's true. So I have a motion to approve this. And we can have a motion in a second, we can just start. Go it down, so I mean, that, that is the proper way to do it, a motion in a second, so. Um, so somebody like to read that resolution.
I'll read that resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Number twen- twelve point four, Resolution Number twenty-two dash oh one, a resolution accepting the bid of Harerton Farms and Stables, saying of Libertyville, Illinois, the highest response bidder for an organic agricultural lease agreement on the eighty plus or minus acre COC dash nine eight three nine parcel at Coon Creek, to be leased for the period of six years at a rate of a hundred and twenty dollars an acre for twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five, and two hundred and fifty dollars an acre for twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight. And to authorize the executive director to execute lease agreement, bid number one one two one dot oh eight dot oh one, and to acknowledge no bids were received on the cropland hay lease for eight. Plus or minus acre COC one one four seven seven, bid number one one two one dot oh eight dot oh two.
We have a second. I'll start here, Chris has the second. Now we're open for discussion. So, Pat, you have some questions, I believe?
All right, my first question was, I, I looked up the Hardin Farms, looked with them and really didn't find anything. Um, so, I don't know anything about them. Um, the second question is, what were we getting before on the land? Was the lease rate before? Um, then my third question is, um, how come we're, I, I realize that uh, organic is different than regular row crops? Or are we subsidizing them or what's going on?
Wonderful, great, great questions, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Ed, Brad, and Brenna are all on, and I believe they have information on those.
So I'll start, those are all good uh, questions, Pat. Uh, let's start with Hardin Farms. Um, Hardin Farms uh, has a stable operation in Libertyville. Um, they actually own a farm near Brookdale as well, and they have been in our farm program for a few years. They rent a couple of parcels near Brookdale. Um, this uh, this particular lease is, I believe, for the son as opposed to uh, the father, but it's the same family and the same operation. So they have land in both Lake and McHenry County. Um, and they are organic farmers right now. They do um, their work organically as well. Uh, the farm lease uh, for the past three years, uh, that's two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one, these, this is uh, the lease that just expired, was at the forty point four two percent rate. Uh, I think as, as you all know, uh, cropland leases are tied to the, the corn price with the December futures. Uh, so let me translate that out to the, to the price per acre uh, over the past three years. In two thousand nineteen, it was two hundred and three dollars an acre. In two thousand and twenty, a hundred and eighty-nine. In two thousand twenty-one, two, two hundred and twenty-four per acre. So if you uh, average them out over three years, uh, it's been about two hundred and five dollars per acre. So uh, and you know, that varies because the, the December futures price varies, of course. Uh, the organic lease is a little different in that it's a base price lease and it will not fluctuate. It's not tied to the December corn futures. Um, so I've used the three-year average for my calculations and it's important to remember that if this was uh, in a crop, conventional crop lease, um, the price of corn might go up and the district might receive more in a given year, or it might go down and we would receive less. So to try to, to use actual figures that we had, I used the, the three-year average. So uh, if we use that three-year average, we will lose about eighty-five dollars per acre over the first three years, over what the base prices, the average price has been in the past lease. Um, so if you take that over three years, it's about twenty-one thousand dollars. The next three years, we'll gain back forty-five dollars per acre, or about eleven thousand, just over eleven thousand dollars. So if you average that out over six years, uh, the district will lose around ten thousand dollars in income um, over that period of time. Um, so there is a loss of some income. Uh, what I will go to with, with the organic, um, the lease, there are some special things related to it. And that is because this field has been in conventional agriculture for a number of years. In order for the produce to be sold organically, it has to go through a process of accreditation. So uh, the, the, the tenant will not be able to use prohibited substances for thirty-six months before they can market that produce as organic. And then further along the lease process it goes, the more, it goes through stages of accreditation. Um, so they will be using a USDA accredited certified agent who will inspect the farm and give them the organic certification. Uh, but I would note that uh, having an organic lease, which is the first that the district has had, uh, is in keeping with the farm policy and its goals. And in particular, goals one, four, and five, and I won't read them in total, but goal one, of course, is in our main goal is to protect and conserve the natural resources of the lands the district has. But goal four is to promote alternative agriculture on district lands when we're able. And that goal basically reads that the district may promote alternative agricultural production leases on lands within the farm management program when appropriate and feasible. Examples of such leases may include local food production, conservation, grazing, and hang, both of which we already have in our farm program, as specialty crops and organic farming. So the, the farm policy itself calls out um, our ability to, to make this type of farming one of, one of the things that we support as we're looking into supporting alternative and regenerative ag. And finally, the last one is to support beginning, goal number five is to support beginning and young farmers. And that one just says the district may utilize the farm management program to support young and beginning farmers entering the field of agriculture when appropriate and feasible. So in this case, the, the bid actually um, really answers not only the entire farm policy, but in particular, those, those goals. So yes, there is a loss of income uh, over that period of time, but um, uh, the decision you have to make is in um, using those other goals and, and bringing organic farming online is one of the things we do. Um, does that offset the um, the loss of income? So as a staff, we feel it does. That's why we brought the permission to go to bid on an organic lease to you a couple of months ago. And actually, we're pretty surprised at the rates we got. They're pretty good compared to what some organic leases are. So that's why you see the differential and in the lease income for those first three years, and then it goes up considerably in the, in the last three. So I, Brenna and um, Brad are here and uh, I'd invite you two to add anything that I might have missed. And also, if we can answer any additional questions, we're all available.
Yeah, I just have something super quick is, yeah, we have worked with uh, Hardins for a while and they are one of the earliest adapters to um, cover crops. So they've done cover crops in their whole field where it was not required. They did it on their own, trying to build soil health. And I think that's, Ed was alluding to, also with the organic farming, that is a step towards more soil health. Um, uh, so that's what we're hoping for as well, less pesticides in the environment, so overall, uh, positive environmental benefits. So that's the only thing I would add.
Brad pretty much hit the nail on the head there. So I'll just add, you know, natural resource conservation and improving biodiversity are core principles of organic production. And that's what appealed to it, um, this option initially. So um, I think it's an opportunity for us to prioritize soil health and biodiversity, as well as ecosystem services and um, water quality too at this parcel. Um, continuous cover and cover crops are also required as part of an organic, certified organic operation. And I think those are, as well as the no synthetic fertilizers and pesticides. Um, those are uh, things that I think are going to be important for uh, management of our natural resources. And um, you know, there's some other benefits to it as well, building organic matter, water infiltration, sequestering carbon, and reducing nutrient loss. Um, this was a unique opportunity in that it was our only cropland uh, lease that was not renewed. And it was um, I believe, well-located in the sense that it was buffered from neighboring ag fields. And um, land to the north and south is owned by the district and also scheduled for restoration or already restored. So it was a sort of a unique opportunity um, to transition to organic in this, uh, on this parcel.
A question, so what is the, what are the crops that they're, uh, what's their plan, what are they going to raise there?
They are proposing to grow um, soybeans, but it's um, edamame technically. Um, so they have a, a source of somewhat, uh, sorry, a buyer for their organic edamame.
So what would they rotate that to them, or will it be just beans year after year?
Um, it will be beans as well as um, rye rotated. And yeah, I think it's beans and rye.
Lynn, do you have?
Bill has.
Oh, okay, Bill, you have a question?
Yes, my question is, are there any metrics regarding soil health that you plan to objectively measure over the course of this upcoming six-year period?
You bet. Um, soil organic matter would be at the top of the list. Um, that's something that I've been trying to take a deeper dive into, looking at um, the rates of organic matter across our farm fields from the soil testing that we've been doing over the last three years. Uh, and that's um, one way to assess soil health, a prominent way.
I guess I would just ask that you report back to us, you know, at some period of time, uh, when you have some information that you can share and we'll all learn from it.
Absolutely, I think this is, it's a pilot program um, for us to learn from and see what the, the impacts of organic. For us to learn from and see what the the impacts of organic farming operation can be.
I got a good question, we've all been on that, where do we advertise?
We did advertise to all of our traditional places, the Farm Bureau, Northwest Herald. And I I did go out on a limb and send the bid to some other partners of ours. For example. The Soil and Water Conservation District, McHenry County Colleges Center for Agarian Learning. The Liberty Prairie Foundation and the Idea Farm Network.
Also, if you, I I believe that the contact list was included in the board packet. And that's pretty standard for us, whenever we go out to bid, we try to. Cast as wide a net as possible, so that we get the best bids.
Well, Lynn has a question.
So we, I think we had a conversation about this maybe several months ago, but it's because of the soil health, I mean, you're. You're indicating there's a loss over the first six years averages out. But and I'm sure it's a little hard to say at this point, but I think that would be offset at least in part by the savings. With the initial restoration as the ground itself would be better prepared. To be converted by the time, if you know, at the time that we would take it back efforts than. With this type of farming. So I guess I would point out that maybe the ten thousand may seem like a lot over six years, but it might offset, be offset by. The improved methods that we would have available at that time in better shape.
Certainly, sorry, I would just comment that I I think that. There's the possibility, well, rather, I would hope that the soils would be healthier. For future restoration as there won't be any pesticides or fertilizers. Inputs like that on the soil. But I, too, I would add if if the lease is renewed, I think there's. The opportunity to see an increase in income on that parcel as well.
Any other?
Um, I, I'm not. I'm not for sure, but I thought that there was some subsidy, you're transitioning regular farmland into organic, so.
Um, anybody?
Well. Out in our neighborhood, there's some big time farmers that are. Going organic. And I was under the impression that, you know, there's some subsidy out there that. Something, yeah. Then my other comp, my other question is, is. Most generally, when I've seen, that's a big nut to crack, eighty acres. If they're going to do it with a hole and a. Chubble, so.
Well, the tillage can be done.
Yeah, right, right, but most, I've always seen that it's. At the weeds. So I'll. They'll make a believer out of me, what's gonna happen.
Interesting to see.
Yeah, interesting to see because, I mean, most generally, you do it on a small scale and you gear it up. If they're going to do this whole eighty acres.
Pat, if if the board would like, as as we move into this down the line. You know, there, we could certainly see if we can arrange. You know, so some tours or taking taking a look at the operation if it interests the board. This is a new step for the district and. Seeing that kind of operation as it unfolds in the in the next few years, it'd be right in line with. You know, the board being able to see how that kind of operation would fit on district property. And. We have had a good working relationship with this family in our conventional ag program, and I I do believe they're. Probably prepared for that large of a site. They are going to do rye and and the edible beans, so. Who knows what percentages they're going to have back and forth as they get it established, so. We certainly will keep an eye on it and we'll be interacting with them and. We can do some follow up reports to you as this unfolds on how things are going there.
Where's the location of this field? I see it's Cool Creek, but what roads would it be by?
I believe it's Route twenty at the north, isn't it? This is, this is one of the only parcels on that side of twenty that was not purchased with Open Land Trust Fund money. So it is not part of of that grant program that we discussed at other board meetings.
Along Route twenty, you say?
Thanks, Ed.
Did you say that it was? A loss of ten thousand dollars across the six years? Or ten thousand dollars per year for the six years?
And what I, what I did is I calculated the the amount we would, we are going to lose in the first three years. And then the amount over. The base price that we would gain in the last three, and then did some simple math on it. So it's ten thousand that that the district would lose overall.
Okay, so that'll be very interesting to see how that goes. How many years you get left on board, Pat?
I'm just saying that by the time you leave, you might be organic farming and raising bison.
Can I ask a question?
Turn later.
Ed, you were talking about some tenants or goals that the Conservation District has working with farmers. Can can you tell me where that is? I'd love to read those.
It's in our farm management policy, and I'm sure Elizabeth will be able to email it to you. That policy was recently updated in two thousand fifteen with a community involvement group, so. Those are the five, there are five goals in the program, those three in particular were particularly appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions, if not, we'll call it a question. Roll please.
Trusty Thomas?
Yes.
Trusty Gaten?
Yes.
Trusty Prince?
No.
Trusty Down?
Yes.
Trusty Campbell?
Yes.
Trusty Coe?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes. Motion carries six to one. You certainly can.
All right, I move that we adopt resolution twelve point six, resolution number twenty two dash. Resolution convening conservation congress in April of twenty twenty two.
Is there a second? He has the second. Then we'll open that to discussion, and that was also coming up later, what was thirteen?
Point five.
Five, so we're comparing thirteen, we're combining thirteen, five with this discussion. So you want to?
I, I, excuse me, I also, on the foundation, I have, that's in my report too.
Right.
In the, in. Direct regards to this as well.
Right, so that'd be great, I I also talked. I had some discussion with them today also.
Okay, okay, great.
And I talked to Kevin today about that also, so. So I think I'll let Elizabeth lead it off. And the budget and everything, and we'll tie it in the U, everything else.
That's good, and I will leave ways so that you can talk about how the foundation. Shared this, so every couple of years, we do Conservation Congress, we've done it for three years. February would have been the normal time that we would have had twenty twenty two Conservation Congress, obviously COVID. And the discussion has changed everything a little bit upside down, but the reason behind. The Congress aligns with our strategic plan on building advocates in support of the district. It's those building blocks that are important that we continue to bring different user groups and interests, not just conservation minded. But across the county to have conversation, to get inspired, to learn what we're doing, and to build those advocates that are really, really important, they're going to be looking for. As we go forward, as we retire our debts. So what we're proposing for this year, the convening is just the official announcement, we make this more of a larger community program. That's why it comes in front of the board versus just a program that we offer in our program guide. To make it, and it is a big deal, to be invited to be a delegate to come to the Congress. What we're looking at doing this year is moving it to April. And we've talked with the college, and it would be a weeknight evening instead of a full day Saturday, based on prior years. And again, because of COVID, I think bringing everybody together in one large space for a long period of time. We don't believe that that probably is the best way to do it, so. We're looking for an evening program where we would have a reception, cocktail hour or drinks to meet with everybody, the socialization is really important. Having a keynote speaker that would come in with the tee up the conversation, we're looking at someone that would be a futurist. Type of speaker that could speak to the three areas that we have an interest in, climate going forward, focused on health and wellness. And then also on access for all. And with those three areas, once the speaker tees it up, then we would have focus groups. Throughout the next several months with different facilitators. That would engage in conversation, and then we would wrap that up with a report that would come back. Like we've done with the state of of Congress. The budget that you have in front of you is based on prior years congresses. And we've scaled back as far as the amount of in time of staff time that would be allocated and who would need to be at the table to facilitate this. We have some ideas on speakers, we've not yet contracted or entertained, we need to do this first. Based on last year or two years ago, when we brought in Richard Lu. An author well known, but we feel someone of just that name recognition. I think we might be able to find some local speakers here that we're able to pull together, so the class could go downward. But we, we're looking to get someone that will draw people in for this event. So the budget in front of you is what we are proposing. Based on past experience, and then Linda, let me turn it over to you because we did discuss it with the foundation. Right, so at the foundation weekend Tuesday. There was a consensus to approve at least ten thousand dollars of this, it doesn't mean that they're going to stop at ten thousand dollars, it means they have. They have a consensus to fund ten thousand dollars. So we have that going in. And if. Going forward that we, the ask is more of a, then we'll consider that as well. So with the budget, the way it's on paper, with that being said, the actual out of pocket expense beyond staff time would be three thousand dollars. And it is not currently in the budget, so this would be an add that we would adjust between the tentative and to the final. And taking into consideration that the board is still agreeable, you know, obviously a crown for the money that comes from the foundation and then how expensive.
Yeah, and I think Bill had a question today, I want to talk to him about the. Labor in time work, Bill, would you like to ask that question?
Yes, and I I apologize for not being there in person, it was an error on my part. I remember Elizabeth, the last month, when this was brought up, you said. The budget or the potential cost would be in the ten to twelve thousand dollar range. I don't, that probably did not include. The personnel part of this that involves the staff. Which is nineteen thousand dollars. And is outlined to be approximately three hundred and eighty dollars or three hundred and eighty hours. At fifty dollars an hour. So it it wasn't clear to me. When are these three hundred and eighty hours going to? Be accumulated, is this? After the, you know, in the evening after a normal workday? Is this on weekends? Is this? Is this above and beyond? The salary that the staff gets? Or is this a budgeting situation where you transfer money from one line to another? But at the end of the day, the staff is compensated. You know, on the basis of what their annual salary is. So if you, in other words, can you explain to me, is this? If we're talking about nineteen thousand dollars, and if we have ten staff involved. Is this nineteen hundred dollars? Above and beyond each staff member's normal salary? In some fashion?
Great question, and the answer is no. The, you're absolutely correct, when I gave you the direct out of pocket expense, that's the around the ten to twelve, which where we're at with thirteen. The staffing time, we were asked to identify the cost that could associate, who's. Who's behind it to produce it, now these are all, you know, employees that are paid a salary, so they're not being paid, it's within their work time that they're readjusting their work duties, no different. And they're preparing for another project or workload, this is, this becomes an initiative, so we, just at the get go, we've identified. In a variety of areas, ten staff, you know, the first one that I have to the right was at the event. Who needs to be there that first night with the speaker to help set things up? Who's going to be there during the focus groups, again, I put a higher on, I don't think we're going to need all that, but depending on how that goes. And then the planning meetings that we need to have, so if we're maybe for an hour, every two weeks or an hour once a month, and so we work towards that, I'm counting that time, but that's absorbed into their salary. It's just they're, they're making time for that. And, but we were asked many years ago to identify how much time of staff was going towards this as compared. It would be like if we were planning on who's doing a candlelight ski, how much is for our hunting program, how much time is spent towards agricultural assessment, how much time is spent towards calls that come in? I mean, it would be no different, we just don't itemize, but for this event, we were asked to, just so. There's a good understanding of the resources that are being absorbed to to put this on.
Thank you.
Do you have enough time, it seems like a lot of time. We're saying staff is crunched on workload. They can still fit this in?
So this is, you see on the staff that I've identified, many of them are coming from education and marketing that would work towards this, there's some executive staff. First, the initial planning meetings, but I don't think all of the directors will be involved into the details as it moves out, they've been to the conceptual training of it. And then they'll, they'll, you know, kind of tear off there, so, and then the foundation director, my involvement with the municipal engagement, so we have the people that are going to interact with these groups. Not the full staff, so. Yeah, it's it's always when you shift, it's you're making room for this, but this is on a strategic plan, this becomes a priority. And with education and marketing staff, they have been flown to with different types of programs they offer, you know, during each season, so.
Any other questions, comments? Say now, hold, question, roll call.
Trusty Gaten?
Yes.
Trusty Prince?
Yes.
Trusty Campbell?
Yes.
Trusty Coe?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Trusty Down?
Yes.
Trusty Henry?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, thank you, everyone. They can bring this on to other board business, approval of Bill's payback for November, and I'll turn this over to Treasurer Campbell.
So we have the internal audit, does anyone have anything that they wanted to look up?
We have twenty bills. Oh, I got one.
Okay.
There was a thing in there for, of course, I don't have the. Vet bill for the turtles, landing turtle vet bill.
Okay, all right.
Where'd you get a good turtle vet around here?
All right, then I, anyone else? All right, I'm sure they can find that one, right, all right, I had a turnkey digital. T three nine three two for one oh five. And. The M four two four, but I'm not sure that this is really necessary, that was for the. The renewal of that lease. Not lease, but. That's for Carol, so. Oh, okay. But I'm not sure, we know what that is, we just did it. So at least a couple would be good. Right? All right, then. I move that we consider to approve the payment to conserve as indicated on the submission of Bill's pending report for the period ending December thirty one, twenty point one.
Is there a second?
One second.
Linda has a second. Any questions, comments, none, roll call please.
Trusty Coe?
Yes.
Down?
Yes.
Trusty Prince?
Yes.
Trusty Campbell?
Yes.
Trusty Thomas?
Yes.
Trusty Gaten?
Yes.
Trusty Henry?
Now abstaining, motion carries with six, four, and one abstention.
I move to approve the payment of the balance of bills as indicated on the submission of bills pending report for the month ending December thirty one, twenty point one.
For a second. That has. Roll call. That has, roll call.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Gaden?
Yes.
Trustee Prince?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
No, well, yes, also.
Oh, it's Trustee Hanny, sorry.
Motion carries unanimously.
Perfect, it's skipped over.
That's all right. All right, let's see, my glasses don't seem too much. Conservation of the combined annual budget. Would somebody like to make that motion?
I could not make it.
Sure, Lynn.
I move that we pass ordinance number 22-1014 this period of 2023, permanent combined annual budget and appropriation ordinance.
For a second. Lynn has a second. Is there any discussion? Have anything else they've gone through and found that they have a question on?
So, like, the additional thing with the conservation Congress will be able to fit that into that budget?
Between the tentative at the top of the print, when we bring the documents together in February, we'll incorporate, yet the board is agreeable to that amount.
Sure.
It's still on the agenda for the next item to accept that budget on the agenda further this evening, but if you're agreeable, we will add that to the total budget.
I really meant to do that budget vote with, with another previous motion that we had on that we did, so we'll, we'll. Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Gaden?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Hanny?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. This, the second reading, we'd like to make that motion. I don't like it, go ahead and read that one.
Of course, I forgot it didn't last.
Do you need mine?
No, no, but mine will help you, you can try it.
Oh, I had to put that just. It's 13.3, correct? 13.3, second reading ordinance number 22-1011, ordinance amending comprehensive administrative policy and procedure manual, chapters 1.00, general overview, 2.00 governance, 3.00 employee organizational structure, and 4.00 general management.
For a second.
Oh, second.
Linda has a second.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion made in seconded. So we have this out there for any discussion, I think you and I, go ahead.
We do, yes. Under item, we need a determination on whether it is be added, there was a request that an item be added for outside working with the president, if there would be an option to advance an item onto the agenda. And right now, the board should decide, I spoke with John, spoke with counsel, there is nothing under the open meetings act that is prescriptive to that, there's nothing under the conservation district that's prescriptive to that. However, out of transparency and good governance, all board members should have the ability to bring an item up for discussion. So the way it is prepared and added to the item, and we just need to decide, is it two members that have to agree to bring an item forward, or is it?
Okay, so, yes, that is true. And so in retrospect, having discussed this further after last meeting, I didn't speak. Now, I never intended to say that it was part of OMA, part of what I was trying to make, accommodation made in OMA to allow people, two people to talk on a five-member board without giving violation of the act, of the OMA act. And that tied into, I was not trying to suggest that it came from OMA or it was part of that statute, but it tied into the idea of allowing people, two people come together to bring that and get it onto agenda. Now, apparently, and this was three years ago, and the person who was presenting it, I was probably one of the few people, if any, that was from a conservation district who was really geared towards park districts. So it is part of the park code, and that's what I picked up on. It's not part of the conservation code. But in the park code, it does allow, the president can call a special committee, two or more members of, on a park district board can call a special, or a special committee, for the side of getting things onto the agenda. So that's where that thought process came. And so there is precedence for it, and I just missed the conservation district act versus the park. I apologize for that. I still kind of stand by what I was trying to talk about, this idea that if two people can come together and identify either an opportunity or a problem, that they have an opportunity to get it on. Sorry about that confusion.
Not a, not a problem. And then I, I had some talk with Elizabeth about whether, I didn't know, and I'm still, I, I'm fine with either one of those, because I think people do have a right to call maybe more to something to an agenda. I didn't know whether I was for two people or three people, sometimes you do the two people that truly wanted work on, maybe something makes the rest of the work very unhelpful, most people keep bringing it up over and over and over again, trying to force it on the agenda, and the board president sometimes says we've had enough of this, I'm going to put it on the agenda, you can bring it up during your report or whatever, but I'm not going to put it officially on an agenda. Three people gives you almost to a majority here. And I, I can really live with either one. I'm just pointing out the one issue we can have with this is, sometimes I've seen this happen on a board, not on this board, where two people just really want to hijack the board and they, they decide, time after time, they're going to force the issue. So that's my only, my only problem with that, but I, I agree with you that, that it needs to be a board president to not be able to stop something from coming forward either. So that's, that's just one of that on, so that's why I brought it up, is should it be two or should it be three? And three gets you really close to a majority here, only needs one other person, so. I, I just think that's, any of you can speak to that, I, I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, I kind of thought the same thing as you, as it came up a lot, so I thought I'd be free. And I, and I kind of tried to run through the different scenarios, and I agree with you, because I was thinking that through. You know, the issue there is, once you bring it up and the board votes on it, they can't keep bringing up the same issue, it's already been voted out.
Well, people do.
Well, I know, I know, but I, I don't know that we generally can, and obviously we're really doing this to prevent potential problems, people are never, you know, that.
Yeah, I'm definitely thinking forward thinking, because I'm not expecting it in the next five months.
Exactly. No, just to hear. So, no, but the thing about the two is that if you have a situation, and this can happen where you can get somebody, mostly on these kinds of boards, I mean, especially if we're volunteers, we're not issue driven, we're not here because of constituents voting us out of something to our issue, like we might get with the prep board. But if you, but it's not on, you know, that doesn't mean that can't happen. You can get somebody who may just make the decision that they're not going to get that on the board, and they're maybe just being confused where it's difficult to get around that. And if it takes more than two people, you could find yourself in a situation where you're just not able to do it. And so I guess there, I feel like there's more potential for these with, if somebody can't get something on, than the other way.
They're going to sit them either way.
It's going to happen either way, and I think it's more annoying the other way, versus if there's more of a potential for these, if they're limited, you know, they need to get them.
Bill, you have a point?
Well, I'd like to ask if our attorney has a, an opinion about this.
Andrew?
Yeah, can you hear me? I can, this is not, this is not one that the law is going to provide an easy answer for you. You guys have the flexibility to do what you, in terms of two versus three. I could sit here and have a better answer, I, I could make arguments for and against both. I do think it's important at a minimum to make sure we're protecting the voice of minority, to make sure that people can at least have issues brought forward to the board. Like the idea of having to at least convince one other trustee to, to join you in bringing forward an idea. So I, you know, at a minimum, I think two is, is a good starting point. Whether you push it all the way to three, I don't know that I have a, a good answer. I mean, I, I went back, I think Lynn was commenting on this earlier, you know, the park code has, through legislation, is two. I've seen that work well, and yes, we can probably point to examples where there's a couple rogue trustees who decide they want to try to hijack things. But, you know, whether you have a rule like this or not, if you're going to have troublemakers, they're going to probably find a way. You know, if, if I was in your shoes, I'd probably lean more towards two versus three, but that's just a personal choice. I don't know that you can really go wrong with either one, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
That's fair as much.
Legal matter, it's just your own preference, you're trying to, and, and I really don't have a real point, do I?
So wait, what is it, wait, what is it now?
Majority. Well, it's a majority. It's a majority of you at a special committee, but the majority have bylaws.
Well, the code, so, or practices on your guidelines or your policies is that the president helps sets the agenda with the executive director. And items, if a member would like to have something added to an agenda, of course, the board president call me, we talk, and, and so before, when you get that preliminary agenda that goes out, the board president, we're looking at what's on consent, what goes, you know, what goes to, so we talk about it. And then the board has a chance to look at the preliminary agenda, and if there was something that, you know, everybody had something of concern, there's still an opportunity before, ask before I publish it. We good to go, board president, you know, to publish it. During a meeting, you could take that action when you adopt the agenda to, I'd like to take something up, I'd like to add, you could add something to bring that up, can't vote on it on that same night because of, you need that publisher notification, always discuss Generally, I have not seen many things of the discussions had, usually it may not be tonight, the agenda's a lot, it's just not appropriate to discuss it. So I haven't really seen too many things blocked, but I think, again, so there's an option to know, it just, there's another way. So that helps explain.
So the two, so the two would be, if I had something I wanted to bring up, I'd talk to John, and that's two people then.
Well, but if I said, but if I said, Pat, I'm not going to put it on the agenda, I don't want to do that, then you could go.
Now, I have to, you would say, hey, I've got this idea that, I think that's okay.
And then, yeah, and that's fine. You know, it's, it's, it's to protect, if a chairman is blocking somebody from getting on an agenda hour, or, you know, if they really need to have voted on this month, if there was a deadline, and I said I'm not going to allow it, and that'd be my way of stopping it. This would give you a way around that so that I can, is you want to do. So, I mean, it's proposed with two in it, and I just wanted to draw, in fact, that three could, you know, sometimes two can be on a board, but this isn't a large board, so.
Yeah, you have like an 11 member board or something.
Yeah, right. So I think the proposal is with two in it, is that how I think it's written correctly?
Well, I, from our conversation, I put two dash three, so it was introduced with two, that was the added request, so if you guys did concurrents, pick them and whatever.
Is the, is two, one, we're good?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to vote with it, there's two in there, and we have a motion made in seconded, so all the question.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Prince?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Gaden?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Hanny?
Yes, motion carries. Update on the OSHA emergency temporary status, adoption of client's policies, limited works, COVID-19 variation, weekly testing and face covering, and speaking to that.
I'm just going to speak, there's not a policy for you to look at tonight, actually the Supreme Court, they were waiting for the ruling, and it looks as if I'm reading through this evening of what occurred, there's back to a stay. So we'll wait to get further information from Paderma, they initially knew that this did not apply to us, it only applies, or was going to apply if you had 100 or more employees become effective, and if the stay was soon to end in July, ready, because we're already passing the deadlines, you have been back in February, is what we want all 100 until we get, uh, those for May. So we're proposing is to keep the board, we'll monitor what's happening with the Supreme Court's stay, we'll follow Paderma, we were going to draft the policy of the first meeting to bring back to you next month with our HR manager and Paderma and legal counsel, we'll continue to monitor and draft something up in the event of where this, this heads. But I don't know that it's going to get much based on what I'm seeing on stage.
From what I actually know, I don't think it's going to go, I would spend a whole lot of time with it.
That's just following, it's, it's a little crazy, but, yeah, the, the COVID, just in general, while we're on that, it's not, we've been in a more, you know, and I'm sorry for the confusion, if we're not moving, it's trying to keep everybody separated, we have been seeing cases daily of increases of team members, not necessarily transmission at work with the family, so the numbers are just, you know, a day as you get a notice, several that are out because of, it's, it's here for a while, it's crazy.
Moves us to 13, 5 of the proposed budget for the conservation Congress for 2022. We've discussed it somewhat already, so you're looking for a motion to approve that budget and add it to our, our tentative budget.
The final budget.
The final budget, sorry. So a motion for that.
I'll make that motion to approve the proposed budget for the conservation Congress for 2022.
Seconded by Lynn, pretty more discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Gaden?
Yes.
Trustee Prince?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Don?
Yes.
Trustee Hanny?
Yes, motion carries. Executive Director's report.
All right, well, we talked about legislatively what's going on, they were back in Springfield for a day, they're having committees, so there's a lot of legislation that, it's in this two-year cycle on the state level that we're going through with bills that were still in active play, still in play. There was with the criminal reform bill, some information being delayed on some of the effective dates, so we are following that, and Chief King has been monitoring through the work with the chiefs of police that's helping us to prepare some of those mandates that we'll need to adhere to. They are moving, the legislative session is ending earlier this year because all of the elections are moved later, so they can get back home in the district for campaign season. So parks day, I'll send information out on that, I'll have to meet with you next week, but that is, going down, it's earlier this year, for that, it's in March, and it's usually a two-day, we go down there to meet with our legislators, and then they do educational workshop seminar the fall of state. So that's legislative, and then as far as the other items, the quarterly reports, they're all out there. Any questions anyone would have had on any of those items, either, you know, if you have them tonight, and you can always hit me and follow, and I'm happy to go through Okay, under other, there are three items that we did just want to update everyone on and discuss. Snowmobile trail request back in August, about a year ago, there was a request for trails around the Plinyan macro site, and at that time, it brought forth to the board, there were some areas of concern in the board, one of the items was a master plan, there was a bridge of concern that needed to be addressed, and we communicated that to the group that, no, this would not, not work. They have since sent us another request to modify the trail with a more limited, to avoid some of the issues that we had expressed concern over. I have spoken with Trustee Don, I know you've been working through, and, and with, sent the new maps out to staff, we got another detailed map today about a modification, and so we'll take a look at that. The, the goal of that map was to avoid where there's an eagle's nest, avoid the area where the bioreactor is, and avoid crossing the creek, which was problematic. So I think there's an understanding that if we have time to look at it and then address it, not for this season, but for next year, that may be something to which to see, we have time to monitor it, see what they're proposing, if there's any way. I think they need to sign off, to my understanding, from the conservation district before they could obtain the necessary connections. So the terminus of the two, and I can show it up on it, there's some theories on a map. So the terminus of the two, and I can show it up on it, there's a series on a map, you want me to show that? Is there other property that we need to sign on first, is there? Well, they're looking, this proposing on district properties. But to get there, I guess they're on the road or right away.
Yeah, from what I know, the trail ends, and they run the right away for a while.
Let's see, I'll see if I can pull that up. That was the original map of trails along the edge, it's hard to read here and to to show you, but along a bank road, up and around.
But that's a creek, is where your arrow, that, the creek, those guys, right there.
Are you going to put it on the computer, or are you just going to put it on the screen?
It's on this.
It's not on.
Oh, it's, well, it's in that movie. Ah, I think we're frozen, I hear frozen.
We've had that a couple times.
All right, well, it's.
That's okay.
So there's the red line now, is it red?
So this is, so that's, they're still existing, that's the edge, right, that was what was, that had come through before, that they had warned it. That was the first request that we talked about, and there was the problem with the bridge and the area where do assessment through the eagle's nest that's out there in the breeding season.
And the bioreactor.
So these are some old stuff.
Where's the bioreactor film, it's in the corner there?
Well, I'll get to it on another picture, I'll show you exactly where, so you can see, we did all the maps, this is what we showed of the different hydrology areas. So then, this was secondary request, well, this was to come inside the park, a little bit, the conservation area, still crossing and then ending up there, okay, so that was, and so that still had problems from what we had assessed before. The new proposed, let me just drop, the new one is to, where the subdivision across the way, it goes on to the south side of the creek along the edge, around the property, this piece here is not conservation district, but to edge the borders of the conservation district around and then back out so that we connect up, so the terminus, there's my question I had, or what staff has, I'm going to back up a picture here. This is the one where bio bioreactor location, and here's that parcel that went through around. So the, this is what was originally proposed. This is, then there was another modification, now this is the one to access from this terminus along where the dotted line is, and then back out, the yellow is existing. I believe existing trail.
Existing trail, correct.
So there's a gap between here and to get to here, get the district.
From what I understand, the right of way is basically.
So they go down the road here.
They don't want to go on the road. I'm sorry, so they don't want to go on the road. Well, they'll go on the road, they have to. They have to ride right up to Allen Dale, and then they get to access a field again, and head straight north. Trail off the road.
So that's, they would be running on the road right there, that little stretch?
Just that little stretch.
How far would that be?
A little, not even a quarter mile.
So what we would need to do with this new proposal is to have staff, it avoids the bridge issue. It's avoiding the bioreactor, I would want to get feedback from staff, as we just got this today of what specifically was before, we didn't have this variation of what they were looking for. The only thing when I teed that back out and we looked at it, was what had changed from what was there before, and now that when we had the summer bioreactor we needed, there was the eagle nesting that was newly found. And so that continues, so so we need to look at that and monitor that, to what would it take if in fact we were to, it still doesn't address the master plan process. So that's a question for the board, but if this is a priority, then staff will, you know, need to take time to address this. I think from a natural resources, and I know staff is on, I don't know that if you wanted to discuss anything tonight, or if you want to wait to study that, I'll leave that to you.
Elizabeth, I think we would need to take a look at the new configuration. The resource, major resource concern there, of course, is the bald eagle nest.
Basically, that's right where it says existing bridge. And that's where the eagle is. Yeah, the eagle's on a tree, I go by it every day. Tree, right where it says existing bridge, just to the north, and north of it. So you see two of them, or one? Anybody see more than that? There's eagle, and our, my folks, there were the big pine tree the other day, it wasn't, the top of it, oh, yeah.
So we need to say goodbye, I mean, are you up there, I mean.
My office, that's the way I go to work, my my house is just north of there, and I go down Queen Anne, goes my office.
So I think we should, you know, again, ask the board if we wish to, for us to take a look at that, we need the time of the year to evaluate that, I know with the snowmobile season we haven't had many, the trails haven't been open to date this year. We haven't had the weather, but then we'll probably, yes, in fact, we do get any, it's usually a short duration. But, so there's a matter of priorities there.
Well, what, so we're saying matter of priorities, so I mean, I guess we do have a situation where there's a lot of things that come before the board and the staff, we're going to, you know, we're going to group has been coming back and asking about that, and so we say priorities, so if we say to go ahead with this, what does that mean, what are some things that we need to come off the table, or are we looking, if we're looking into next year, does that allow enough time to kind of find a configuration before next year without? I guess I don't know what it, what it means.
Well, there's always the the process, and this is, it becomes the district hasn't established, when we look in the conservation area, a master plan, which is a formal process to look at what types of activities and uses are on a particular site. The Queen Anne, we have not done a master plan for that site. But we've got a bioreactor out there, and sometimes you can, if we establish a place that goes outside of that, once a master plan is done, it's difficult to take something away, so sometimes, you know, once it's established, but that's up to the board. We usually have followed that as as practice, as you know, with many of our master plans, they've never been fully implemented either. They're planned out, maybe phase one, but we never get to phase two, phase three, because we haven't had the resources by the time, you know, but there's still the process in initiating that. As far as what projects, all the master planning has to go through our planning team, they assess it, you know, as far as doing their review, because they usually own that, our natural resources team, you know, they do their environmental assessment, as does that. So this is a very short season, it's a it's a use, but it is, it's not a a year round, but you have to be cognizant of the impact to the other activities, and is it is it in sync, does it work, or is it not in the larger goals?
Be the next snowmobiling myself. It's, it doesn't seem to me like, basically, the trail is what is wide, these two tables? It goes through there, and I don't know. Probably fifteen feet. Yeah, fifteen feet, it's like is it going to hurt anything? Well, I think there were concerns earlier with the with the other. Well, right, right, I, I'm the bridge, and the soil, I don't know, and and the eagle, of course, so. No, no, I think it is, we looked at it, I think they've addressed some of that. As far as the the timing of it, Elizabeth, I think if staff could at least, we could, if I go back and we say, yes, they're looking into it and hopefully get something done, but I don't think we're looking for something this year. But I think if we could at least show that we're addressing it, and staff's going to look at it and talk about it, and maybe give them an answer in a couple months or whatever, that's what it takes, I I think that's fine, just you know. I think we need to at least address it. And then that be right away. So if I go back and say, you know, yes, staff's going to look at it, and they could maybe not this next meeting, but the next meeting come back with with some suggestions or something.
Can I ask a question, Chris? So, I had, in the, in the plan, if, like, the trails were open today, would they be snowmobiling right by the eagle? Or by the bioreactor?
Not, not, well, the way the trail, the way the new one is. With the new one, this is the new one, the eagle over here.
So they would be away from it?
Yeah. Far, if it's far enough away, I'm not and if somebody else could address that there, me, I don't know what the distance is, but yeah, I personally think they probably would be far enough away.
I wouldn't know, I don't, I wouldn't know, I would, I would think the impact of snowmobilers, our wildlife would be a concern.
Sure.
But I don't know.
There are studies, and and our team would need to look at that, there are environmental impacts, there's wildlife where there's non-compatibility, you know, but we do have trails and so in the system, the district stats, and and we do have them off by Glacial Park, we have them. So I think it's signing them is important. Obviously, ensuring that they're not towards things, some areas that have been dedicated as the only state nature preserves. When we look at habitats, I think we want to look at that so we can make a good decision, and that's how we take the time to carefully look at through a master planning process to make sure, but I don't want that to be perceived either, that it's the tape and blocking, you know, because there's interest, but there is a reason, every time, or general my experiences, when we tried to we tried to zig and zag and act it through a process, there's unintended consequences that occur. And and then how do you manage that without seeing, so it's just, it's being responsible for responsive yet? There's a reason why those processes.
Yeah, no, I think they understand that, so.
It seems that we have a dialogue going with this group at this time, so I think we need to continue on.
And this actually is two clubs, I guess, one one that's communicating with me is Warner Lake, but then I did get contacted by the wood stock. A little bit, so, they sort of share trails too, I guess.
So I think we need to have some follow-up sometime. Now that they've put a new proposal forward, we we responded to their first proposal and said this won't work because of, and we gave them three reasons why, they've come up with another alternative shorter route, so I think we need to at least address that, if there's something that's stands out immediately that, hey, this isn't going to work, then we need to communicate that to them.
So with the new information today, as I said, I sent that over, that gave us a little bit more, I think they were also, to my understanding with some of the other trail connections, they were waiting for us to kind of see if this was feasible before they went out to the neighbors, or some other areas to get support as well, so they want to start with us, and then the other pieces.
Sure, I I do have a question about the snowmobile trails, I mean, do we have much of an issue with snowmobiles going off the trails and going out in areas where we don't want them, or are they all pretty responsible and they stay where 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 it's supposed to be?
That is a really good question, I have not had things brought to my attention, I know at an early time, we did on areas where we had some issues with signage, but I think our team, and I'm going to let John answer that, or who from our Parks and Fleet operations team that has addressed that, or even natural resources. You guys still there? My screen is freezing.
Yeah, I know, John, you want to go first?
Sure, you know, we do have you know, when when there's enough snow and the trails are open, I I I think they're well-marked, they're groomed, you know, once, once the the trail's gotten beaten up a little bit, so you know, they're they're fairly well-followed, and you know, we do have, and sometimes have a, you know, put a police presence out there just to, you know, let them know that we are keeping an eye on things. But they will go off-trail occasionally, and you've got to, you know, work to get them back, you know, in line. I have, we we have seen different techniques to do that, but in some respects, it's it's mostly enforcement.
And the only thing I would add is that I think the clubs, in particular, do a really good job of making sure their membership knows state of the trails, because they want the trails to go on, you know, into the future. But you don't have to be a trail club member to be on a snowmobile trail, so in the past, some of the issues that we have had have turned out to be people who aren't aren't snowmobile club members, so there, some of them don't follow the rules, but I think overall, the clubs make a a really good effort to try to make sure that people stay on the trails.
I don't really have a way to keep people off of the property, even if there's not a trail there, I mean
only by enforcement.
Yeah, only by enforcement, I mean, but somebody can jump on us, if there's three feet of snow out there, somebody could jump on a snowmobile and go about anywhere when it's right down to it.
Yeah, I I would add that a couple of times, it's been snowmobile club members who have called in when they've seen people off-trail to let the district know, and because I do think they they appreciate having the trails, and they don't want it ruined by someone not following the rules.
So how's it, how does it work, real quickly, on the road? I mean, there has to be, does it have to be snow, or can it go over?
The road itself, they can cross the road and stuff like that.
They generally ride in the ditch. With the snow, and then if they have to cross the road.
You got that thing that was about, maybe a quarter mile, so they can do.
Yeah, they just chuck it in the ditch.
Okay, so we'll come back for that, we just wanted to make sure that we're updating where that was, and I appreciate you solving everything and all of that, so you can look at that. The other one that I wanted to update was this ground handling request, I had kept the board from the emails, kind of went back and forth here, and this request was not to do paragliding, but to basically, on the ground, manage a large paraglider. And this individual wanted to do it at Glacial Park, because they normally run the trails, initially, as you saw through the dialogue, I cited our general use ordinance, which isn't explicit in restricting the one you have requested, however it could block or or obviously find itself, we've had issues with perceptions of individuals taking lighting off of the panes, off of other areas, and using that. We don't think Glacial Park is the place. It may proceed to give others that they could paraglide off anything that they see it, it is something that we could have a special use permit somewhere, whether it be at a parking lot, or something that we'd be able to do. It's just the area that this individual was looking at was on the farm fields. The farm fields that are there, they are released, so they belong to the farmer. Or the other areas that have been destroyed in the period, and since, again, that would impact wildlife, the birds, and things like that, so it's it's kind of a place to do these things, and I know it's difficult because everybody sees open space, and they feel like any activity should be able to go there, but there's reasons why they're not there, and it gets complicated, and so my answer was initially, it was, let's look at it, obviously, that was a little bit of patience, but the answer was, no, but we'll we'll continue to keep it open, I think long-term if the district was to try to identify a place, if there's interest in these other types of activities, then we probably should look to have some conversion of someplace that we would have, it's a new initiative, we'd invest in the resources, and put a place that's not in conflict with something else, right, and think about that on a long term. Maybe future, towards that special day with dollars, when we have the new monies to do new things.
To me, that maybe park district should be better suited for that kind of thing, because they're more likely to have big old fields where on a certain day might be easier to view, I don't know. If long term, I get what you're saying, and then maybe that's what we're going to do, when we have more resources and not shut down maybe entirely. I don't know, I mean, it's another initiative. And I think there's, there is a little bit of misunderstanding of of access to our natural areas, and it says very specifically in our and I do know this because I've got they so that, you know, we don't have to provide access, I mean, it really does, the lands become first, and so but you're right, it would be something that would be down the road.
So I I just wanted to update, my answer was, no, if the board felt differently to my response, and maybe need to handle it differently, then please let me know and direct me, but that's where I end up at this point, I think. It's not a progress form.
If there's one individual, if we're a club or a larger group or something, maybe look at it, but one individual, pretty hard to to justify with what I'm doing, yes, my thought.
And then the last piece, we did have needing to go in Alliance Prairie Marsh Erosion. And what we would like to do is want to update, staff has looked at it, we are proposing to come back ideally in February, and recommend Um, ideally in February, um, and recommend uh, maybe going out for a request for proposal to study. There's some options that we become, uh, that we'd be able to use to plan accordingly, so we'll come back and make a presentation on that proposal. Um, but we have been looking at that, and uh, again, that's another complicated issue, it's gonna require. Some specialists to take a look at that, the study. Make a quick determination on that. And then we can decide if that's feasible or something that's class prohibitive as far as the recommended steps.
Thank you.
That's all.
Great. Have any else to ask Elizabeth this time? Now we're gonna move on to committee assignments and reports, uh, trustee reports on conferences and meetings attended, uh, anyone have anything? Like with COVID more thing, more things are being shut down more all the time. Okay, um, so we get to do Fox River, Coast System, Lynn?
So actually, they just met yesterday and they did do the uh, program on a national gluten discharge elimination system, um, and that really just, I mentioned it before, it's just. Uh, quality control, uh, to control for uh, flutens that get into our surface waters. Um, traveling the other team, how we did an overview of the new requirements in phase two of this program, which is a national program for the state BCA. Um, Scott Kikegall from the county and then Mark Phipps from um. City of Aurora spoke, and it was actually really quite interesting to see the difference between the school level versus the county level and what their requirements are and the. The efforts that have been going for it. Um, so that, that, that's a big challenge in terms of keeping flutens out of not only rivers and streams, but out of our aquifers, which is still important here. Because we rely on the groundwater. Um. So that was that, uh, next month is our February, they're gonna be doing the, every February, so legislative um, program, and that will be um, Jack Aaron of the Sierra Club, and we're gonna bring in Elliot Clay from Illinois Environmental Council. To talk about um, legislation um, regarding environmental issues, so.
Thank you. Great.
Kishwak River. Uh, Kishwak River did meet this month, uh, last Friday, I unfortunately was not able to attend. Uh, but there was a. Uh, meeting. From Nycor Gases Regional Manager of Community Affairs, his name is Aaron Miller? Yep, Aaron Miller. Um, and he did a presentation uh, on Nycor's. Uh, one of their programs called Ten Thousand Acres, that sustainability, sustainability plan. Um, where they are uh. Giving out uh. I believe that's a grant. Uh, to preserve ten thousand uh, acres in. Not, I don't remember if it was Illinois or kind of town specifically, but it included a kind of. But like I said, I unfortunately was not able to attend, so I, I didn't get the, the details of that meeting. Uh, but I will ask for a presentation, uh, so maybe we can uh. Go forward to staff and see if we can maybe get in on that if at all possible, so.
Must be ten thousand acres, you know, like ten thousand acres in the county.
Yeah, it'd be pretty good, so. Fair assessment, that is.
That'd be my guess, that'd be my guess.
John, I can comment.
Go ahead, Bill.
I, I happened to li- listen to that uh, on the, you know, the video. And uh, they're particularly focused on dealing with. Uh, foundations, five oh three C, if that's the right number, you know. Numbers and initials. So I don't know if, and they do annual grants, they don't do long-term grants. And they don't do land purchase grants. So they, you know, basically do specific projects. And often in amounts of uh. A few to several to ten thousand dollars. Um, so I don't know if our foundation. Has had any relationship with this Nycor uh, group. Uh, but it, uh, they would certainly seem to be a reasonable fit for a uh, well-defined project.
Thank you, Bill. Anything else, when you?
No, I was just gonna say, maybe I can email you the. Uh, the link to the gentleman's email and you can forward that on to the foundation, so they can take a look at it, maybe. They can present to the foundation, that's the laws.
Very good, thank you. Chicago Wilderness?
Chicago Wilderness, we have an executive council meeting next Wednesday morning. And uh, at that meeting, um, we've got uh, new officers coming on, um, we've got a presentation of the hub. That's getting to launch, which is our methods and measurement, it's a cool tool that the Field Museum uh, and other partners have been working on. That uh, will really demonstrate through a GIS specific on, on how we're mapping to make the area green. And then we're also working on a regional campaign launch. Um, that will promote and elevate uh, this green vision momentum tied in with the American Beautiful Thirty by Thirty. Uh, so we'll be looking forward to that, so uh, if you're interested, I'll send out the link, it is by.
Henry Honey Farm Bureau.
We met last, excuse me, we met last night and I, I heard Dan Volker's right that. Um, you guys are gonna be there next month, yeah, um, Conservation District and. Or what is, just uh.
Relationships and what's going on.
Sure.
We're gonna be this month, but then with COVID, yeah.
Cause there's, when I'm there, I always get. Get both sides, you know, they, because they know I'm on the board, so it's always like, it's not my fault. Stuff's happening, though, there's somebody that always complains. So one of the, his, or this person's complaint was that. He's got livestock right next to where the bison is. And he was never told, they were never told. Bison were coming and they had tested for brucellosis.
Why, because they are a carrier, yeah.
Of what?
Brucellosis. It's a disease that causes abortions and.
So, it's a wild, fascinating.
Well, we're glad you're there to bring that time to us. That's good, that helps us, but a friend I too, I think there's a.
Cause they, you know, they were, and then, like I said, I give. And they were, hey, what if they got bison, what's, what's for why? Are they the wrong way to explain it? This seems to be a real good relationship. Projects, I assume, so it's, it's good. What's, oh yeah, okay.
All right, Elizabeth, your next.
I am, so the only association of conservation forest preserve districts will be meeting at the IUPD at your conference on Thursday, um, January uh. Twenty seven to three P M downtown uh, at the Hyatt. Um, I don't know if I do a hybrid uh, plan, but we'll be working through um, legislation, usually that's the group that's attended by our elected officials and senior staff. Um, so we will, um, anybody that's interested, I don't know, um, if you're interested in going down there, otherwise. Um, that is pretty much it, and then the conference IUPD meeting is on the Saturday afternoon, three o'clock. But I've got the proxy, so I will be there and vote on that for the board, if anybody else is going. We invited our legislators to lunch, we're following that up on the afternoon, if the awards luncheon on Friday. Um, even though we're still in this high COVID mode, I, Carrie and I have done a good job ensuring that it's going, we have to be vaccinated and doing other programs to make sure it stays the same then, so. I will be down at the.
Thank you. Conservation Foundation?
Yes, hi, um, Tuesday was their foundation annual meeting. Ed gave a great presentation on a muscle reintroduction, brush water muscles and Nippon Pacific. It was really fascinating. So I thank Ed for doing that. And um, he did a really good job, of course, as always. And they really appreciated, there were some side comments about somebody's never gonna eat mussels again. So it was, it was great and well, well received. Um, you're gonna have to help me, Elizabeth, Carol Elkins is a new. Administrator assistant, that's what I had, but I wasn't sure, administrative assistant. She took the place of Brad Summell's wife, I can't remember her first name.
Yvonne.
Yvonne, yes, yes, that's her name. So Yvonne is no longer the admin assistant, Carol Elkins is.
Did Carol, excuse me, did Carol have uh, any previous ties to the foundation at all for this, or just?
I don't think so, National Foundation, she applied, but she has a passion for a lot of the natural environmental work that was.
Okay, I just, it's a part-time job and I didn't know.
She, um. It is a passion of hers and I think she's excited for it, so I thought that was refreshing. They went through their balance sheets and she was talking so fast, it was hard for me to write all these numbers down, but their total assets is, if, if, I hope I have this figure right, seven. Um, hundred fifty-five oh six eight point eight two dollars. I can't tell you what anything else is because I don't have it in front of me, but that, I think that's it.
And you have your quarterly report in the board package too.
Yeah, it's in there. So they did have their um. Election. Brett Ivors is the new president, Brad Summell is the new vice president, secretary is Ray Ashburner, did I say that correctly? And Karen, um, Kim Becker is the treasurer. They do have a new board development committee, which would be. For, is that Brad? Dennis and Jim Isler. Um. They agreed to the summer camp scholarship, not to exceed a thousand dollars, uh, they're supporting the Nippon. Nippon Muscle Reintroduction, not to exceed ten thousand dollars. They've agreed to the annual support of Big Woods for. In the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and oh three cents. So that was, they were all yeses, they're, they worked on their um, McHenry. County Conservation Foundation Board Member Fundraising Policy, which. I'm missing something in there, but they, they voted that yes, they put some. Their fundraising exceeded. Was exceeded by twenty-five percent over last year. Um. Project updates. Can I, can I do this, the project dolmen parcel? Twenty-seven thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars and forty cents, has that asked, been asked? Have we asked them? I, I'm missing something in here, did we ask for that?
The dolmen, well, that was part of the gift, there was a golf parcel, and so the work that was there for the dolmen.
Okay, and then there was a five thousand dollar restricted gift for the muscle reintroduction, so that was in, in there as well. Pedal, paddle, saddle is um. The second Sunday in June, which will be June twelfth, they do have a team of Marty and Dennis. And again, we already went through the Conservation Congress. And the next meeting is March eighth, six thirty at Los Angeles, so. And they're doing a really good job, I feel, I think there's a lot of um, momentum going forward and, and.
They're a fun group.
They are, actually, we can, and um. Yes.
Very energetic, very good.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it was fun, I mean. We're gonna be working, they had a strategy session afterwards. And I did not. Yeah, and so one of the things to add on that they are looking, they're going on tour. And uh, they're gonna be working with the different municipalities and kind of doing a little. You know, uh, pitch uh, and scheduling times, and so they want to go hand in hand. Foundation Board, the Conservation District Board, Sean and I, and so we're gonna get a schedule together, and so. If you're, we're gonna be asking you to join us and kind of help go on the road. Particularly areas maybe where you're from, your district areas, or people that you know that would help. And. They're ambitious, they were, they, yeah, we could do this. Yeah, it's, it's, it's refreshing, so it's, it's nice to see so much excitement for it, so.
They really can do that.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, my card, Lynn?
Nothing really going, I mean, they, I mean, we get the newsletters out, I think um, Elizabeth, the board was on, uh, so really. The only thing, nothing that I can see in terms of a meeting, um, that has been announced, uh, they have their legislative um, report slash agenda. Um, there's a link to that in the newsletter that Elizabeth sent out, other than that. Um, they, they, we've got out a couple weeks in a row now, so. The real I have, um, we talked last month, the dinner, the holiday gathering had been before our last meeting, we discussed that, so. That's it for now.
Okay, thank you, Green Drinks?
Uh, Green Drinks, uh, we had um. This month, we had it on how to reduce single-use plastics, the uh, defenders. Had their uh, waste reduction committee uh, discussed, and there were three people there, Zach, who's the chef owner of Deuce. Presented on food waste reduction. Excuse me, and then we had two more people. Who were actually from the waste reduction team from the defenders group as well, great ideas about how to get rid of these single-use plastics. Um. And there is a sustainability, um. Program that is just for restaurants, this came up, it wasn't really part of the, the program, but Zach was talking about how restaurants, if you have a favorite restaurant. Uh, that you know of, that you'd like to see them go a little bit greener, or use some of those single-use plastics, they have a sustainability. Um, program at the end of January, uh, through MCC, if uh, you know anybody, I can get you a link for that, or. Contact Zach over at Deuce, um, so that is, I'm just thinking that they're going to better. Um, this next month is again on plastics, um, somebody from Avatar Group, which is a community, I believe it's out of Chris Lake, and they produce plastics. About the things that they're trying to do to make their plastics. More environmentally friendly going forward, what that would take, so that again, that's every first one's there.
Thank you, uh, John, Bicycle Industrial Plan?
Yes, the uh, committee uh, has a meeting scheduled next week, so I will update the board uh, uh, in February.
Thank you. Let's see, this. It wasn't, wasn't, this is McHenry County, now it's Naturally McHenry County, okay?
Yes, we are Naturally McHenry County, so it's a destination marketing organization, it's very exciting. As far as the brand launch, and we're live in January, there's a re-part to this whole design, it's been studied for quite some time with the county. And the Economic Development Corporation and the destination marketing. Portion, um, each entity has redone their branding, they're like sister logos that go about. And so uh, we'll be pushing information, the, the key part of this with the Naturally McHenry County for the open areas and natural areas are ecological tourism, the natural areas that make McHenry County beautiful. It's a being recognized as assets, brand assets, and um, that's really important, so that puts us in a very key place in working through that business visitor economy. And um, we'll see a lot of more coming, so I know the foundation talked about, that they were very eager of partnering and leveraging that for fundraising. And um, so you'll be seeing new stuff out there, but yeah, Visit McHenry County is gone, it's Naturally McHenry County.
They just sent out their newsletter today, their announcement, emails about, I think that one's.
Hey, anybody else, have any other outreach contacts this time? Hey, well, that, we're gonna go to public comments, too, Stephanie, anybody out there or anybody like their comment?
No, there's no one out there.
Thank you, uh, with that, I'm gonna take a motion to go into executive session, uh, we welcome, we will reconvene afterwards to. Adjourn, but there is no action to be taken after the. And so, anybody that's out there, uh, there's really no reason to hang around. So, uh, so I have that motion during the executive session. Somebody needs to read whatever, Lynn, will you do that?
Sure, um, I move to go to executive session pursuant to two C one personnel, two C twenty-five lease purchase of real estate. And two C twenty-one, we have a closed session. Open meetings at five I L S C S one twenty-one.
Thank you, is there a second? Ed has the second. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Trusty Cook?
Cook? Bill?
Just go there.
Yes. Um, I muted myself, but yes, I'm all for it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Trusty Gayton?
Yes.
Trusty Thomas? Yes, Preston Town?
Yes.
Preston Press?
Yes.
Beautiful?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously, we're going into executive session. Thank you to everyone, everybody stay healthy, and uh, hopefully see some of you, somebody soon.
Now I can hear.
Okay, there we go.
Right here. All right.
All right. Let's see here. Did I get everybody? Trusty Fritz?
Here.
We're all good. All right.
I didn't do Lynn or myself. Okay. Now I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion to adjourn.
Linda has motion to adjourn. Ray has the second. Now I can roll call.
Okay, roll call. We've got, uh, Trusty Fritz?
Yes.
Treasure Campbell?
Here.
Oh, yes. Trusty Down?
Yes.
Trusty Gaten?
Yes.
Vice President Cook?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. We, we are adjourned.
All right.
Very well.